All right, let me get rid of this. Thank you, Jamie. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Town of Newton Board of Selectmen's Meeting. Today is March 5th, 2024. It is 6:01. If we could pledge the allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Absent tonight is Selectman Dan Guide with an excused absence.
Yeah, recording is excused.
Unfortunately, he couldn't be here tonight. Public notice. Town reports, they are available here at Town Hall. They will be available the day of the election at the polling station for you. Also, in the mail, if you haven't received them already, you'll be receiving them very shortly, is the... The Voters' Guide.
Oh, the Voters' Guide.
Yep, the Voters' Guide to let you know about the different warrants, what's going on, how the board voted. We basically supported everything that we put on there. We hope that you'll look at them, become an educated voter. We know that there are a lot of them. Please feel free to make a cheat sheet. You can bring a piece of paper into the polling station with you when you're...
Leave it behind.
When you're going down it. What's that?
You can't leave it behind in the book.
No, you can't leave it behind. You got to make sure you take it with you.
So, question on that. So, we did U.S. mail?
Yes.
Oh, really? Interesting. Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, I think before we only did, in my time, was on the website, which it's on the website anyway, if you don't want to wait for the mail, right?
Just so you know, it's still there.
So, it is on the town website also, but you will be receiving them in the mail.
It is for...
If you choose to try to look them up earlier than that. All right, with that being said, any citizens' input about what's taking place tonight that's on the agenda? We don't have too many people in person tonight, so we will look to Zoom. And we have none there. None yet. With that being said, we're going to move on to administration. An emergency recognition.
Thank you. And I thought that that voting guide was a great idea, and as Matt's going away present, isn't he paying for that? Only kidding.
I thought I saw something funny on my credit card.
Yeah, see? Okay. I'm very pleased to be here to tell you about a few people that we need to recognize. I usually don't have to read anything. I shoot from the hip, but I got to read this one, so bear with me. I also have a bad tooth, so if I lisp, find me a dentist. Okay. So, everyone in TV land, the Newton Board of Selectmen and our town administrator, Jim O'Mara, have asked me to share a few stories with you regarding our first responders. As I tell you these stories, I want you to walk in the shoes of our first responders. Although they won't admit it, our first responders are our heroes. Let me start out with one of our police sergeants. Sergeant Aaron Mounsey has just been chosen as a champion for children by the Child Advocacy Center of Rockingham County. Child abuse is not something we like to think about, but it's real. And alone, it can be happening when we don't even realize it to our own children. It is a reality. One in seven children experience physical abuse or neglect. One in four girls and one in 13 boys are usually sexually assaulted and abused before their 18th birthday. This country loses five children a day to child abuse. These are horrible stats. Newton Sergeant Aaron Mounsey has been available to help nurture children affected by abuse and violent crimes. While working with the advocacy center, children are provided with a safe environment so their voice can be heard. The sergeant has gone above and beyond his regular duties in order to make a difference in a child's life, or for that matter, even in a family. The month of April is National Child Abuse Awareness Month. The sergeant will be honored at an award breakfast on April 12th, along with five other people that will also be getting this distinguished award. Sergeant, thanks for all you do. You are a hero. Yay! So, now I'm going to get upset.
Why don't we do this while you're...
Yes. Thank you. Get composed. Okay. So, it's not... And here's another story. It's not an easy task to say thank you to someone who doesn't think they did anything special. Let me ask you this. Have you or a family member ever been in a life-threatening situation when all of a sudden a police officer, a firefighter, a medic, or even a member of our service has arrived at the scene and saved a loved one's life? In your eyes, in your eyes, that first responder is a hero and will always be a hero to you. Yet, that first responder will just say, "I'm just doing my job," or "I was happy to be in the right place at the right time." The teamwork and camaraderie that is part of our Newton Fire Department and our Police Department is what saves lives, homes, children, and pets every day. These men and women get dressed for work daily, just like you do. However, they risk their life to do their job, and in some cases, get hurt or even lose their life just doing their job. Here's another story. Thirteen days ago, on February 21st, at 5:12 PM, a structure fire was toned out in the neighboring town of Kingston. All the area towns provide mutual aid to each other when needed, and we have a great camaraderie because of this. This was one of those times. Dispatch said the owner of this very old, large home stated his house was on fire, flames coming through the roof, and many pets were still in the house. Newton, along with many other communities, were called out for mutual aid. Many of our firefighters and first responders responded, including Chief John Elcudino, Deputy Chief John Kane, Lieutenant Sean Kane, Lieutenant Justin Kane, firefighters Brandon Merrill, Levi Richards, T.J. Passad, probationary firefighter Nolan Ash that you just approved last week, driver operators Ron Jackson and Sean Lox, and our road agent, Mike Pivero. As it happens, Lieutenant Justin Kane had arrived on scene before the rest of our team. While he was assisting a Kingston firefighter on scene, suddenly the firefighter collapsed, having a medical emergency. Others at the scene jumped in to assist Lieutenant Justin Kane as needed, but Lieutenant Kane stayed with the patient on scene, in the ambulance, and to the hospital. When Lieutenant Justin Kane was said to be a hero, he said, "Nope, just doing my job." Our other first responders stayed to fight the fire, get the pets out of the building, and kept the fire from spreading. And they also said, "We're doing what we're trained to do." While all this was going on, many more mutual aid communities responded with their tanker trucks. Unfortunately, our dry hydrant that was being used, or the Kingston one, was being used to fill the tanker trucks broke. So, our operator, Ron Jackson, Sean Lox, probationary firefighter Nolan Ash, and a Sandborne firefighter had to improvise, and they did. They went to Kingston Lake, set up a hose with a pump, so all tankers from all the communities could continue to get water to control this fire and keep it from spreading for almost five hours. This was strenuous and difficult. It's a workout they hadn't planned on, even though they were trained for it. Our police, fire, and medics are our heroes. They never look for glory. Here we go again. Okay. They never look for glory or recognition. Okay, wait. One more sentence. They have a life of dedication and an inner strength. I'm thinking of my father. Okay. They have an inner strength that remains calm. Last sentence. Here we go. I'm going to end this with saying, "Men and women are created equal," and then this first responders. Amen.
And the board would like to recognize all those first responders and with a deep gratitude from the bottom of our hearts and the hearts of the people in this town. We thank them all.
Yeah, the... We have... These guys are kind of like superheroes, as far as I'm concerned. You know, this stuff happens behind the curtain, I like to say. We just don't know what happens. And as we've talked about very much this year, you know, these first responders, most of them are in town for a reason, and it's not money because we're really not in that type of town that pays their hair because they love this town, they have a relationship with it. So, I'll just, you know, shamelessly say, if you go to the polls on Tuesday and do your homework before Tuesday, a great way to thank these first responders is to vote to approve the budget that's going to support what they do so they can keep doing this stuff, so.
Well said.
As a note, they were also part of the first responders to a structure fire last night and late yesterday afternoon in Sandown.
Doesn't seem to end.
Nope.
All right, with that, we're going to move on to the release of the bond of 26th and 28th Thornell Road.
So, with that said, I move to authorize a treasurer to instruct the All Five-Cents Savings Bank to release the landscape performance guarantee bond held against Robert R. Scally LLC, 26th Thornell Road.
Second.
Seconded by...
I thought it was gone already.
Seconded by Matt. All in favor?
Aye.
And this was a bond, just so the public knows, that was put in place before the planning board for work that was done. And the conservation office went out, made sure that everything was intact and done properly, and we wanted to release the bond with due diligence. So, we thank everybody concerned in being able to get this matter addressed and taken care of. Appointments for recreation. Matt, would you like to talk about this?
Yep. So, also, when you go to the polls, check out the cover of the town report. You can see some members of the Rec Commission who have been doing a lot of great things in our community for a long time. So, we have two members of the Rec Commission we need to re-up, which we're glad about that because they do a lot of work. So, I'm just looking for the file that says, "Suggested motions." Maybe I'll just free-form it. Oh, no, here it is. Thank you. Okay, so I would like to move to reappoint Sue Mears as a member of the Recreation Commission with a term to expire on April 30th, 2027.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Joe. All in favor?
Aye.
I would also like to move to appoint Amanda Aiello as a member of the Recreation Commission with a term to expire on March 31st, 2026.
I'll second that.
Seconded again by Joe. All in favor?
Aye.
And both of those were unanimous.
We thank them for their continued support of these events in our town.
Yep. Without that, things wouldn't be getting done. Appointment for Cable Committee.
I move to reappoint Marilyn Landry as a member of the Cable Committee with a term to expire April 30th, 2027.
Second.
Seconded by Matt. All in favor?
Aye.
And then, once again, Marilyn has been serving, and her time was up, and she has been kind enough to resubmit, to dedicate some more time to the Cable Committee, and we thank Marilyn for that and her service. You want to do the veterans' tax credits, Joe?
Yep. Veterans' tax credits.
Before you begin, one is a tax credit for veterans. The second one is an elderly exemption. So, the first one you're going to make a motion for is not a veteran's tax credit, it's an elderly exemption.
The first one?
Yes.
Okay.
I move to approve the application for elderly exemption tax credit for MAP 7-2-1-10, beginning tax year 2024.
Second.
Seconded by Mike. All in favor?
Aye.
I move to approve the application for veterans' tax credit for tax MAP 16-5-9, beginning tax year 2024.
Second.
Seconded by Mike. All in favor?
Aye.
And next, we are going to address an electrical estimate at 8 Merrimack Road. It seems it has come to the board's attention that we were unaware of, that the police station and, excuse me, firehouse were suffering power surges in both of those buildings, which were leaving their equipment...
Vulnerable.
Vulnerable. And in some cases, some of the equipment had to be replaced. So, with that said, as soon as we heard about it, we took the appropriate action. We had our...
Facilities.
Facilities. I wanted to make sure that I had the... Facility maintenance person.
Mark Bosch.
Mark looked into it. He came up with the solution that we need, if we simply had power surge protections before it got into the system, that it would help resolve that problem. So, with that being said...
I move to, okay, I move to award the electrical worth to Kingston Electric at the amount of $1,682.50, funding to come from the Engineer and Renovation Trust Fund, 8 Merrimack Road, account number 423583.
Second.
Seconded by Mike. All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we will move on to manifest.
I move to approve payroll manifest in the amount of $52,547.35 for pay period February 11th through the 24th, 2024, with the pay date of February 29th, 2024. Payroll includes no money, no costs, and upper costs.
Second.
Seconded by Matt. All in favor?
Aye.
I move to approve vendor manifest in the amount of $1,172,365.68 with the pay date of February 27th, 2024. Payment includes $1,030,695 to the Sandborne Regional School District and $33,682.33 to Municipal Resources Incorporated.
Second.
Seconded by Mike. All in favor?
Can I just... That's okay. Point of discussion, another shameless plug. People should look at the Voters' Guide, and on the Voters' Guide, I think it's on the first page, is a pie chart that illustrates how much money from your taxes goes to the school and how much goes to the town. So, if, shameless plug, to look at that pie chart, that'll be very educational before you go to vote, so.
You don't do a lot of them decide? Can you vote shameless plug?
I was a yes, yeah.
Okay, so that would be unanimous on the vote.
But that, I feel it necessary to mention that after that motion because, so people can see...
Where the money's going.
Where the money's going.
Right. And that's why we plead with trying to get what money we can to be able to afford the services that we do for the town and the people in it.
Yep.
I move to approve a withdrawal in the amount of $3,875.49 from the Cable Revolving Fund to pay an invoice to Hewlett-Packard Financial Services.
Second.
Seconded by Mike. All in favor?
Aye.
I move to approve vendor manifest in the amount of $1,482 with the pay date of March 5th, 2024. Payment is to Rick Gonyer for snow plowing services.
Second.
Seconded by Mike. All in favor?
Aye.
And we'll move on to the minutes.
I move to approve and accept the public meeting minutes for our public hearing dated January 15th, 2024, as written.
Second.
Seconded by Mike. All in favor?
Aye.
I move to approve and accept the public meeting minutes dated February 6th, 2024, as written.
Second.
Seconded by Mike. All in favor?
Aye.
I move to approve and accept the non-public meeting minutes dated February 6th, 2024, as written.
Second.
Seconded by Mike. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. And now, we will move on to action items, new and old business. Gentlemen, anything that you want to talk about?
Jim, did you want to talk about Greeny Park?
Yes. Did you want to ask me something about that?
No, just, I know it was quite a few months ago, but you mentioned that you had an update about the parking improvements.
I do. At the request of, I believe, Mr. Pivero, our road agent, the town engineer went over and walked the lot, and he put down some flags delineating where wetlands begin and possibly use for additional parking down there, as well as other things. Mr. Pivero is also in touch with one or more logging companies who may be in a position to clear the land for the price of the lumber that we give him because we really have no use for it. This is clearly going to be something that's going to roll into action in the spring, but it's also going to require some board guidance on a bigger picture because you don't want to make a parking lot in a finite space where you can use other space adjacent to it for other types of recreational activities, like relocating the tennis courts or a skate park. So, those are going to be part of the consideration as well. We just don't want to do it piecemeal, but know it's in the works.
Okay, thank you. And the other thing I'll mention on that is, the opening day is May 4th. That is when the biggest mass will be there. There'll be games beginning in April. There'll be a cleanup in April. But, so, keeping that in mind, if you're looking to do some work over there, you may be best to wait until mid-June to do work over there, so.
Okay. The other thing that you should, the selectmen should know, Mike Pivero and I, again, you know, we've been working with FEMA and Homeland Security on the storm disaster damage and trying to recoup losses. One of the things that came up from the last July 2023 storm that was damaged that Mike and I put in for is the back, do I call it the back end of the baseball field? It kind of, during one of the, during that July storm, it kind of settled in, so there's like a huge divot there. That is actually part of the things that is going to be, we're going to get money for to fix. So, we'll bring that up to the normal level, reseed it, do whatever is required. But, I keep forgetting to tell you, that is one of the things, along with all the other roads and swales and culverts that we're working on. And when I talked to Mike Vignali about the flagging, so he's flagged all the wetlands recently. He's done that. And he said, now that we've called him again, he'll put it to the top of his list. So, we'll keep you posted on that. Okay?
Very good. Thank you.
And you might also remind the players that the facility maintenance tech, Mark Bosch, coordinated with Aladdin Roofing, and there's a new roof on the concession stand slash storage area, and the dugouts are being repaired and re-roofed as well. They are so far damaged that the rafters themselves had to be replaced. And I think they started it, but then there was a snowstorm, so they're probably coming back when it gets drier.
Awesome. Thank you.
Very good. And we'll have a nice, healthy ball field to work with. We would also like to remind everybody that a week from today is voting day. We encourage everybody, as Matt was alluding to earlier, to become an educated voter because an educated voter is a good voter. They make the correct decisions on what should be addressed and what doesn't need to be addressed. So, we hope that you'll do your homework before you go, and you'll see the importance of everything that everybody here at Town Hall has put forth and presented to the voters. And also, I'll speak for myself, but I know the rest of the board feels the same way that I do, is that Mike Carmley is running for reelection, and we hope that everybody out there will see fit to reelect him because he was an integral part of this selectmen team, and his services definitely could be used again.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
And I have one item. Some time ago, you authorized the transfer of a retired police vehicle to the Emergency Management Department, specifically the EMD. That car, I'll be generous, it's more than a limit. It's unsafe to drive and will not pass inspection next month, oh, this month. Chief Kane contacted me earlier in the week. He is retiring another vehicle that he believes he could either sell online at an auction or transfer it all to the EMD. And he asked me what my preference was, and I said, "I'd like it to be transferred to the EMD for one main reason, is if you sell it, the money goes to the general fund, not back into your department and not to the EMD department." So, I think a motion might be, make everybody more comfortable, if the motion would be to authorize the police chief to transfer a retired vehicle to the Emergency Management Department as soon as possible.
Well, with that said, I'll make a motion that we advise the police chief to set the paperwork and motion to transfer the retired vehicle to the EMD.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mike, and I will put in there for discussion that we, this time, we want to make sure that the vehicle's inspected properly, that it's going to be suitable for her and her tasks.
He said the same thing.
With that being said, everybody in favor?
Aye.
And that would be unanimous.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything else?
Sorry. I just, unfortunately, the town report is out, and unfortunately, one of the reports for a department didn't make it in. And I briefly want to make sure that you go online to look at the stewardship report. This is Hidden Acres Conservation Easement on Thornell Road. The owner of that property lost her husband in January of last year, so she's trying to maintain this conservation easement by herself. And one of the things that we did put in the report, our stewardship committee, is helping her. She's doing a community garden with a lot of people in town that want to help her. So, if you know anyone that could possibly help this lady keep this farm going, this is the first historic preservation easement in the state of New Hampshire, and we'd hate to lose it because we can't quite get enough people to help us maintain this property. So, my email, the conservation email is fine to use. We're going to set up a plan for when we're going to do the community garden planting, and if you know anyone that can help her, we're looking for help.
Well, let's make sure we get that out on the town website, too. Thank you, Trish.
I just have a couple of comments, if it's okay. Beginning with, I only need an hour and a half. Do we have time for that?
No, Matt, I'm not hungry.
So, this is my last meeting, so I just wanted to say, you know, thank you to the voters. It's been 10 years. It kind of flew by. It's been a privilege. It hasn't always been an easy job, but it's been, I feel good about what we've done because, you know, my kids have never lived anywhere else but this town. I always look at it that way. So, you know, I appreciate the support of everybody on the board. There are so many, many members of the board over the years. It's funny to be here 10 years. It was totally different board then. I will say, you know, next week on Tuesday, you know, a lot of what Bob said I agree with. Do your homework and vote. Chemistry is important. I have been on boards where there wasn't good chemistry, quite frankly. This board has had an excellent chemistry. I encourage people to make a vote based on what they think will be the best chemistry for the board. I encourage people to look at the Meet the Candidates Night, look at the Voters' Guide. And like I said earlier, we need to support these departments who do everything kind of behind the curtain. We don't realize what they do. And, you know, kind of the last thing I'll say is, if you're, I was speaking to somebody... a few months ago who had been on the board for one term, and this person said, "I feel bad, I could only do three years," you know? And I said, "Can you imagine if more people only did three years? We would have so much new talent and so many new skill sets going through the board." Because quite frankly, I've been on for 10 years. No one should be on this board for 10 years. I'm sorry, I guess, you know, new blood brings new skills that we don't have. Experience is something we can draw from with department heads and stuff like that. So if you're out there and you're thinking about getting involved, get involved. You won't regret it. Get involved. Every, almost like every board and committee needs somebody right now.
We have a lot of open positions.
Exactly. So knock on the door, and that's what I did.
Don't be shy.
I went on the ZBA, and I don't think we had a plan we looked at for like the whole time I was on the ZBA. It was a, it was a light turnout. And then I ran for selectmen, and I was successful with that. So I, you know, I want to thank Bob for being the chair this year. He's done an excellent job leading the way as the chairman, and I want to thank the other members for working together. What you see on that ballot wasn't just thrown together. That was a lot of hours and a lot of hard work, not always on television, hard work going on downstairs, sometimes on the weekend, so. Other than that, you know, I thank you guys. I'm not moving out of town or anything, so I'll be around. So, but, thank you again, and God bless everybody. And if you want to say goodbye, I'll be spending about eight hours, nine hours on Tuesday at the polls, so come by and vote and say hello.
Say hi to Matt.
So, thank you, guys.
And we would like to say thank you to Matt for, as he said, all his hard work, his diligence that he's put into this town. And with everything that he just said, he speaks from experience. We're talking about a man, an attorney, a family man, so a man that has a career like that, who has carved out 10 years of his life and dedicated it like so many other people have to this town, to be of service to it, to help this town move forward, to make sure that the emergency services that we continue to talk about are maintained and kept up, that we have recreational facilities and things going on for the children and our seniors of this town. It's just immense. So he has been able to maintain all of that and do it for 10 years. So if you're sitting out there, like Matt said, and you think, you say, "I just don't have the time," well, you would be surprised that you would be able to find time and be able to set just a little bit of time aside, you know, each week or each month to be able to be part of. And I can tell you now that I have, can't tell you the amount of enjoyment that I received to be able to sit behind the scenes and just see these things happen and take place and be part of. And again, we want to thank Matt for the 10 years that he's given to this town. Sweat, blood, tears.
Sometimes all at the same time.
Yeah, exactly. So with that, thank you.
Thank you.
And with that, we will adjourn the meeting.